Conduct in the City Council Chambers. Rules of decorum for the public. Members of the audience shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, including the utterance of loud, threatening, or abusive language, clapping, whistling, stamping of feet, or other acts which disturb, disrupt, impede, or otherwise render the orderly conduct of the city meeting infeasible. A member of the audience engaging in any such conduct shall, at the discretion of the presiding officer or a majority of the city council, be subject to ejection from the meeting per Government Code Section 54954.3C. Removal from the council chambers. Any person who commits the following acts in respect to a meeting of the cities shall be removed from the council chambers per Government Code Section 54954.3C. A disorderly, contemptuous, or insolent behavior towards the city council or any member thereof tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. A breach of peace, boisterous conduct, or violent disturbance tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. Disobedience of any lawful order from the mayor, which shall include an order to be seated or to refrain from addressing the city council, and any other unlawful interference with the due and orderly course of said meeting. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the TAF City Council Successor Agency Joint Regularly Scheduled Meeting for Tuesday, June 6, 2023. The City of TAF council meetings are being held in person with full capacity seating and are live streamed at www.youtube.com/user/CityOfTAF. Public comment may be made in person and can also be received per the following. Written comments may be dropped off in the drop box in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to thecityclerk@cityclerk@cityoftaf.org. They may be made by phone to the City Clerk's office at 661-763-1222. Public comments will be accepted up until 5:00 PM the day of the meeting, and all comments received will be read into the record. We're going to begin this evening's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, which is going to be led by Councilman Josh Bryant, followed by an invocation from Sean Pfeifer. If you would join us, please.
Please place your hand over your heart and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Let us pray. Almighty Father, we come before you this evening, and we pray for guidance for the city council and these officials to be the best possible stewards of all things within their control. We pray for wisdom in dealing with the factors not in their control, including relief from outside forces, and wisdom in dealing with those. We pray for those at the federal and state levels to comprehend our local concerns, that they would be discernment in favor toward TAFT. Lord, we pray for revenue and economic opportunities that would come for the purpose of the welfare of the people. We pray for the welfare of the whole city economically, socially, and spiritually. We ask all these things in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen. Amen. Sean, thank you very much, sir. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Nor.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cryer.
Here.
Councilmember Bryant.
Here.
Councilmember Waldrop.
Here.
Councilmember Shabara.
Here. All right. First item on this evening's agenda is an award presentation. Heck of a way to start a meeting, isn't it? The APA California Central Section 2023 Planning Awards, the City of TAFT, and Rick Planning Plus Design. C-Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll turn it over to Planning Mark Staples.
All right. Planning Director Mark Staples.
I'll be brief, as our Central Section Director Johnny Lann, AICP, will be presenting the award for one of our projects.
All right. Excellent. Well, Johnny Lann, welcome to the City of TAF.
Thank you so much. As you mentioned, my name is Johnny Lann. I am the Central Section Director of the California Chapter of American Planning Association. APA is a national organization, professional organizations of planners. It's 40,000 of us planners. They provide a number of things for us to help our communities, professional development, templates for best practices, just so that we can support our communities with economic development, physical planning, physical growth, housing, as well as environmental protection where that's needed. The California Chapter is made up of eight sections. Central section is the largest geographic section, but we have the fewest members. We encompass 11 counties, all the way from Stanislaus County down to Kern over to the Nevada border. So, as you can imagine, we have everything from Death Valley to Mount Whitney to the Central Valley Ag, a lot of different geographical diversity within that. So, we learn a lot from each other. It's a way for us to network and be able to take those things back from other communities and be able to, even as the state brings down law, we're able to help interpret some of that law so that it can be implemented in something like the zoning code, which you're going to be hearing about later. So, your award, so excited for you guys, is an Award of Excellence, Economic Planning and Development. It is being presented to you. You had a consultant that helped you, Rick Planning and Design, but this is for your downtown-specific plan and zoning ordinance update. So, I'm honored to present you with this award, so hope you hang it high and are proud because it's a wonderful, wonderful thing for us to be able to now look back to and show other communities what you guys have done, and maybe for them to also mirror that. Your town is wonderful, and I really am honored to be here to present this to you.
Well, what a wonderful bunch of things to say. Mark, you're going to step up here and accept that award, I'm going to have to guess. Mark, do you have a few words for us?
I'll just be brief and say thank you to Johnny and the jury panel that the Central Section put together. I believe the Central Section awarded 10?
12.
12 awards valley-wide and on the eastern Sierra. Johnny's making the rounds to the different award winners to present to their councils and boards of supervisors, so I really appreciate her being here today. I was able to give her a tour of our great city. She loved it, like everybody else who makes their way here. They can't believe this little jewel on the west side, but it's here, and I'm sure she'll go back to, she's a little more Modesto-ish area. As she said, we're pretty spread out in the valley amongst all of our members and our board, and I'm sure she's going to go back and talk wildly about us. So, thank you for the work. Appreciate it.
All right. Very good. Once again, Johnny, thanks for making the trip. And thank you to the board that made this selection. Mark, job well done, as usual. Thank you, sir. All right. Next up, item number two, we have a study session draft, proposed changes to municipal code relating to code enforcement. C-Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Valerie Troche with Civica Law. She will be presenting the proposed updates to our code enforcement changes.
Hello, Valerie. Welcome to City of TAF again.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, and esteemed council members. Thank you for the opportunity to let me speak today and discuss with yourselves as well as the public, hearing about the proposed municipal code updates that are being contemplated by the city. I'd like to give first a little welcome and background about how the process we've gotten here today. This code revision is a good way to bring the city's codes up to date with existing and newer laws that have passed in recent years, and it is a process that has been vetted not only through the city manager's office, but also with code enforcement, building and safety, also finances well, and we will also have the blessing of your excellent city attorney, Mr. Efferson, here today as well. So, to kind of dive into it, what I do as an attorney of outside counsel for the City of TAFT, I work with the city to help on the code enforcement-related matters, to help ensure that the health, public, and safety, and welfare is protected. And so, the city council here today have those goals always in mind. And so, the goal here with updating the municipal code is to enable city staff to do an excellent job in serving the community and keeping it safe. That's the backdrop. All right? So, these are the purposes right here. General way of putting it, and we've made it a swift, quick little PowerPoint for you, we're making sure that the codes update recent state and federal case law, so decisions of the courts, as well as some statutory laws that have come out, so the code just needed updating. Simple, straightforward, making sure it's in line to not create any issues of liability for the city, and making sure those laws are fully carried out to protect the public. Also, the code, because it's a little older as drafted, the updates will ensure that the code is more readable and understandable for not only just the public, so that's transparent and clear, but also to ensure that code enforcement and the staff and the officials that are enforcing the laws have an easy time enforcing it. It's a win-win on both sides of the aisle in that regard. It also ensures that there's optionality for code enforcement tools. So, instead of just one path, because code enforcement is not a one-size-fits-all model, the city will have the option of issuing maybe citations, courtesy notices, taking other actions as necessary, given the circumstances of the particular case. Finally, there's also provisions to ensure that the taxpayer dollars for work such as city abatements, if a property burns down and the city has to recover costs, to ensure that those costs aren't being borne by the taxpayers, but by the property and those that created the nuisances and the dangers at issue. And so, the overall goal, right, is to ensure that the public's safety, the health and safety is enhanced here for the city. So, just briefly, we'll go on to the main categories of the changes that will be coming up that are being proposed, okay? The main categories you see are these, you know, seven or so. One is the administrative citation process. That's issuing citations to put the public on notice when there are dangers and violations of the municipal code on their property. Citations can be issued and giving the proper notice and procedures to appeal and contest those, you know, if necessary, and as well as ensuring that process is clear and easy to follow. Next is nuisance abatement provisions and related processes. There are also other mechanisms in your municipal code currently for nuisance abatement. So, if a property is run down, if abandoned building is on a property and is causing a danger and there are break-ins, you know, there are processes involved. And so, this code revision will be streamlining those processes and making sure there's adequate notice given to property owners, that there is an option to be able to appeal any enforcement actions, and that there is a cost recovery component built in as well. And I'll say across the board, for administrative citations, for nuisance abatement, for any of the options that the city will take, the processes should be relatively the same for an appeal, for example, or for the notices and how the notices will be delivered, again, so that it's easy for the public to understand what the processes are, and also for staff to be able to enforce it, and it keeps costs down too, because it's all the same process. So, briefly to touch on the remaining provisions, there are also regulations about those that are sleeping in vehicles on public property. There's been some law recently developing in that area, and so, we're just making sure that the law matches up with the prohibitions to not let people sleep in vehicles if there are certain categories and qualifications that are met based on the case law that's been developed, okay? There's also situations that we've been brought to our attention here that items of personal property are left on the public streets, and sometimes it can be, you know, stuff like trash, which can be disposed of, but other times it might be something more substantive, like items of clothing or sleeping bags, other types of materials. We're putting in place a process to be able to confiscate and store it and give the proper notice for it. Finally, some regulations for use of fireworks. The city is very supportive of safe and sane fireworks, which is excellent. That's a great way to celebrate the holiday. And so, we're leaving that intact, but we're making sure that if those that are using dangerous fireworks, which the city prohibits, that we are making sure that there are enforcement tools in place to enforce that, okay? Finally, in terms of mobile vending, the city currently doesn't have laws on the books as it relates to sidewalk vendors, and that is a hot topic right now, and there is a lot of laws that have came out in recent years that require certain types of regulations. So, we're building in those regulations to make sure that you can enforce where necessary, and also protect yourselves from liability for not having those type of regulations on the books. So, I'm happy to go into more detail. I've created a lot more slides, but I think that that covers the general gist of it. So, if you have any questions, I can pop over and give more information, however you'd like to see fit.
No, I'll start. I have a question. Immediately comes to mind because you talk about the changing laws. Well, laws within the state of California are ever-changing. I don't know the number of laws passed in the legislature last year, but they consider thousands of them, literally. So, the City of TAF has gone to the expense to hire you and help you get all of our things in line so it's up to date and it's efficient. We don't end up with any problems regarding the application of code enforcement, and yet, some of these things could change literally tomorrow. So, what is our avenue to keep what you have just helped us do up to date? I mean, if something comes out of Sacramento, does it throw up a red flag, and you know that, you know, it's already built into our codes, and we run parallel to that, and we don't want to run afoul of it? How do we stay up with that?
Well, two things. So, first, on the practical side, our team monitors the code enforcement-related bills that are in the Senate, in the House of Representatives. So, we are constantly up to date. That's what we do. We don't do other types of law. You know, we're not in the city attorney position. Excellent job. I'm more of this nerd that just focuses on code enforcement. So, that's what I'm monitoring. So, you will know, and we will update the city when new laws are on the books that may require a change. The second part is also, we've built in provisions into the draft code that we're working through to allow changes through resolution. So, you don't need me and my costs for another ordinance update. You can update the fines, for example, through a resolution that simply, maybe your city attorney can work with you on, or yourselves and staff can put together. So, we've made sure that there is an efficient way and a streamlined way to be able to address the changing laws. And so, kind of what we've been tracking is we've just seen sometimes fine amounts have been changing, but the rest of the stuff for nuisance abatement and the types of remedies available, that's been consistent. So, the areas where we see that there's potential change, we're tracking. And two, there's mechanisms where you might not have to go through the full ordinance process. You can go through a resolution, give the necessary notice to the community, but also get it done in a quick way.
All right. Very good. One thing, and it's a hot-button topic, it's actually throughout the United States, in the state of California, that is homelessness, vagrancy, you know, people living on the street, and the processes that municipalities have to go through when they see encampments being built and things like that, those things are ever-changing. So, and that need for code enforcement regarding those issues is going to be constant for a very long time.
Oh, you're right. 100%. There's constantly laws changing, and there's constantly interest groups fighting on both sides of the aisle.
Right.
And so, really, I think what's facing cities, right, is this catch-22 you're stuck in, right? And so, these ordinances and these amendments address some of that, right? But we've also left it open to make sure that we get direction eventually from the council if you want to take other directions to address the homeless situation. I'll give an example. Even as we've been drafting this ordinance update, a law in September recently changed, and a Ninth Circuit decision came out, and I had to make sure to update this. So, sometimes just given the fundamental nature of these hot-button items, I can't guarantee the law's going to stay the same, but I can guarantee that we're monitoring it, and we're going to make sure that you know what options are available to you, and we can update and address as needed.
All right. Very good. Well, it's nice to know that we've got a strong current foundation, so it's very important. So, gentlemen, I will open to ask two additional questions. Who wants to lead off?
You know, I don't have any questions, Mr. Mayor, if you guys don't mind me going next, but you had made allusion to, and the gentle lady also had said the same, that we constantly have more and more coming down, being thrust upon us from up on high, whether it's federal level, state level, and whatnot. One of the most important tenets of our way of life is what's, it was outlined in the Bill of Rights, the Tenth Amendment, those things that aren't already exclusively talked about at the federal or state level, or then incoming upon, you know, the local municipalities. Our municipal code is that. It's the way that we manage that, the way that we can still take action and keep control as best we can within the existing laws to fit our way of life, our desires for the future. So, I appreciate that. I look forward to staying on top of that, and I think this just gives us another tool in our toolbox to mitigate the things that we constantly have thrust upon us, especially the things we don't like, how we can navigate those waters and still be the place that we are and we've been proud to be for the last 100-plus years.
All right. Thank you very much. Gentlemen, any additional comments or questions?
Yes, Mayor, I do. Thank you for being here. Excuse me. A lot of times, the laws really don't change with, sometimes, with our Senate and our Assembly. The law is that the judges will make changes. For example, you'll see on TV a lot of times, you'll see cars or campers and stuff parked on the roads, and all you have to do is say, "That's my home," and you're protected. Are we, will we be protected, will they be protected here in TAFT with the ordinance we have? Will they go on a vacant lot and say, "Well, that's my motorhome, that's my lot, I'm going to live on it?" You know, our ordinance prohibits that.
So, to address your concern there, we've built in procedures in the municipal code that are 100% consistent with the government code that tells you what you can and can't do when it comes to regulating nuisances, and the good news is you do have a lot of flexibility, right? And so, there are questions with respect to whether the type of living situation that you're talking about is on a public street, is it on a private lot, right? And so, you have enforcement mechanisms built in to address, let's say, the private lot that you gave the example of, with not only the, you know, person living there that might be a squatter, that might be, you know, in whatever circumstance it may be, you have an option to address those that are utilizing the property. You also have options to talk to and get involved, the owner of the property. Let's say it's a vacant lot, and someone is just not living there or taking responsibility for it. There's also, we've defined responsible party to capture those that are committing the actual issue, as well as those that own the issue that just may not be there, but indirectly are letting it happen, and they're ultimately responsible. So, you will have optionality to ensure that whatever the circumstance may be, we can address it. And so, the specific case law that may be coming down, absolutely, we will have to navigate. It is going to be oftentimes a case-by-case basis, because you have to look at the exact facts, the location, what they're saying, all of those things, but we can help navigate that as the circumstances come up. And your code staff is excellent, your city manager and the team that are overviewing all of that are excellent, and they're in touch, and they know the issues that are coming down the pipeline, and they know the city better than most, right, and they know the issues that are coming up. So, you're in good hands, not only on your legal side, they're looking out for you, but your staff is excellent and know the field and what's happening out there.
I'm glad you recognize that we have a good staff.
Excellent staff.
We do have a good staff.
Excellent staff.
And, but to ask a little bit further question would be, say, on the rails of trails, we have a little green beltway where people can walk and stuff. Sometimes there is some catwens overnight, it could be a week, sometimes you don't discover it because they don't get, they're not there till later. Now, is there, are we having any issues with the move them out, or we can run afoul, or some type of a law or something that could get us in legal jeopardy?
Yeah. So, we can absolutely, when those come up, we'll talk about it, and I'll give you the real attorney-client privileged information so we can go through and make sure we're covering it. But there has been some recent law that came out that talks about the homeless encampment, and if there is an actual health, safety emergency where there's lack of sanitation, lack of issues, that protects cities and their enforcement abilities. So, there's some law out there on the books that can help that's outside of even your municipal code that's protecting you. So, there are options. And so, again, it's a case-by-case basis, and so, the goal here is to give you options and make sure you're in line with the law, and then we'll look at each situation as it comes in to make sure you're following that law and able to address the dangers for the community.
Well, thank you for that, because it's important. You know, we don't like it, but we have to follow the rules and regulations that's coming down to us, but thank you. You did very, very well.
Thank you.
All right. Any others?
Yeah, I just got a comment briefly. So, you know, it's, the common theme is that vagrancy and homeless is a big issue, and unfortunately, we're dealing with it as well here in our community. And it's important that the public understands that it's coming down from the state and federal government that is not necessarily supporting us in this area. We were having a conversation earlier, and I think that it's super important that everyone understands, and this came from the mayor, is that we, the citizens, are responsible for this vagrancy problem, and he made a really good point. If we continue giving and giving and giving, giving these handouts, this problem is not going to stop. So, we need to be responsible, a responsible community, and not continue giving these That was just a comment that I wanted to make. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, and that is a fact. We are, and I'll dovetail on that, we are victims of a safe, responsible community. We are, and I mean, we're a generous community, and so, many of those people that are interviewed by the services, that that's what they do, the professionals, they come here and they make contact with those folks, and these are former addicts and former alcoholics, and they understand what is going on. And when they debrief them and they say, "Well, I can easily get three square meals a day, seven days a week, I can lay down anywhere I want to, and I feel safe, and I don't get beat up, and I don't get robbed, and if you stick out your hand often enough, somebody will give you money, clothes, whatever." Well, we, through our generous nature, have created this environment that actually draws those types in, and they're in, those people network. They do. They network because they have come from other areas, because that's what TAFT is. TAFT is generous. TAFT is safe, and we are a victim of that, and we need to be cognizant of that, because the reality is, those people that are out there, they don't need that kind of help. They need help getting to a program that will get them out of that lifestyle permanently. And thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate that.
Just one more comment. I think it's important as well is that we need to make it very clear, we're talking about a specific population. We're not talking about people that really do need help. We understand that there's people in every community that's, that unfortunately goes through times of hard times, and yes, we as a community are willing to help those individuals, but those are two different populations that we're referring to. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Well, I want to thank you very much for your presentation, your hard work, and giving us the tools, and most notably, our code enforcement group, so that they know the actions that they actually take are within the boundaries of the law, and we don't violate people's civil rights, and we're able to continue to provide for a safe, healthy community, and hopefully, we can help some of those people get the help they need. But all in all, code enforcement is a critical component of quality of life in a community. It is. Every aspect of code enforcement is quite critical. So, thank you for being here. Thank you for coming, and it's a worthwhile investment. C-Manager Jones, you have...
I just wanted to see if anyone else had any public comments on the study session that they would like to...
Oh, I see. Oh, I see, all right. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment on this?
Because this is a topic that the majority of the community that wants to talk about. This is your opportunity to come and be here and talk about this topic. So that's a really good question. Where are they at? Where's your research? Where's your informed information? So we can have this conversation as a community.
And these items will be back before the council for a public hearing, two public hearings. So they'll be heard twice, so.
All right.
Other opportunities.
All right, excellent. Thanks again for coming and visiting with us. We'll look forward to seeing you again soon, then.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say, you know, I don't really need any credit here. It's actually staff that's been doing all the work. They identify the issues that need, you know, improvement on, and staff has been excellent in ensuring that this code is tailored to what you guys need. And the thanks also goes to council for supporting these issues and protecting the community. If it was without, without you and your direction to making this happen, and, and the city manager's office, the clerk's office, the code enforcement building, everyone that's been involved in this process, we wouldn't be here to be able to help, help the community.
Thanks for being a member of our team.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Appreciate it. All right, thank you very much. All right, next up, item number three, public hearing on cost and placement of lien on abated property. City Manager Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. The property located at 405 Center Street was damaged by fire, and an emergency abatement was performed on the property. The owner of record has been notified by certified melon posting on said property in accordance with the City of Taft Municipal Code of the costs incurred during the abatement process. The owner was also notified the time and place of this public hearing on costs whereby council will hear any objections or protest from the property owner or whether any other interested parties. If cost of abatement, as submitted or modified, is not paid within five days of the date of the confirmation, the confirmed statement of expense shall constitute a lien against the property and all costs to be made personal obligation against the property owner pursuant to Section 3773 of the California Government Code and Taft Municipal Code, Section 3-4.5-5 CND.
All right, thank you very much, City Manager Jones. Recommended action is to conduct a public hearing regarding the statement of expense. At this time, I will open said public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on this matter, either in support of or against, come forward. There is none. However, we received an email, right, from a Neil Cortez regarding this issue, and so it will be read into the record. He asks, "Please submit my statement below, and please forward the link to view the meeting, please." So here it is. Mayor Dave Nor, councilors and staff, thank you for hearing my comment, though would had preferred to be at the council meeting to speak in person. I'm asking for cost concessions from the city for these costs. Brief background, 20 years ago, as a working person, as personal investment, I took out two mortgages to purchase the two vacant buildings on Center Street. At that time, 401 Center had been vacant for over a decade. I took out more loans, further invested, and put in, put in months of labor to attract entrepreneurs to open businesses there. I successfully kept the buildings occupied most continuously despite the solvency challenges of the business tenants. At some point, my last tenant got in bad terms with city code enforcement, and the building was red-tagged. At the time, I thought the red-tagged was approach was excessive. I'm reading this verbatim. Shortly after the insurance canceled their policies, I honored red tags keep-out restrictions. Unfortunately, squatters, vandals, arson did not. Arsons did their deed, insurance did not cover a dime, and I'm still paying mortgages and taxes. First and foremost, thank God no one was hurt. I'm asking the city to forego some, most, or all of the cleanup cost. I'm glad city acted fast to clear burned rubbish. It would have been much more cost-effective had I commissioned the cleanup. Much of the cost charged to the job are city workers' time. Other line items were excessive. Example, $8,000 for the temporary fence. Please make some considerations. I'm asking for the city to waive those costs. Thank you for your consideration, Neil Cortez. Anybody else wishing to speak on this issue? Hearing none? I'm going to close the public hearing. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt a resolution entitled Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft Approving and Confirming the Costs for the Abatement of the Nuisance at 405 Center Street, Taft, California, APN Number 031-040-11-00-0, in the amount of $13,654.47, and find that the activity is not a project per California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 15061B3.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mayor Protim, you made the motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I think $13,000 is not a bad price, what the city had to do. They acted quick. There's a lot of overtime. And they did a hell of a good job for that price to clean all that up, fencing all that. And he had an opportunity to come after the fire to help identify it. And a lot of people don't realize that, you know, the cost that the city did is prevailing wages according to state law, and a cost of having to do that at nighttime when a fire was created. There's a lot, a lot of time spent, and the city did it. And the city workers did a really, really good job. I watched them out there working, and they, and they worked their butts off to get it and make it done right. And so I have no sympathy for Mr. Cortez on that. And, because he had opportunities to, to get the building in a safe condition before the fire, and making sure everything was locked up and secured. So that's all I have to say, and I have no-
All right, thank you very much, sir. Councilman, you made the second on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is maybe a rhetorical question, but Jason and Craig, you guys are welcome to answer. When the building was originally red-tagged, according to his statement, we have documentation of our communication of the reasons and his, his process for remedy, correct?
That's correct.
And also, when the building ultimately caught fire, we did the same. We followed the same process to do notification, give them opportunity to remedy, or the, the notice that we will have to do this at taxpayer expense, and thereby a lien would be imposed, correct?
Correct. The proper process was followed.
Absolutely. And that's one thing I think it's critical to hammer on here, is at the end of the day, there's, it wasn't the city jumping out in front of it, saying, "Hey, this has to be done. We're going to not give you a chance to take care of your own property." It was the city doing what you failed to do as the property owner, in my opinion, based on the information we just received. You didn't do it. The city had to do it, and ultimately, now it's your responsibility to pay the city back and make the citizens whole. One thing that is really important here is he made the word, made the mention of the word here, but he said investment. And what folks don't realize, or what I hope he does at this point, is investments carry risk. And unfortunately, if you don't do your best to protect yourselves, that risk can come up and bite you on the backside. And I hate to say it, some of this may be due to some of the other issues that are imposed upon the city, but that's a risk that you take, being an investor, a property owner, or any other investment you might have anywhere in the world. Just so happens, his was in a building, and the building caught fire for some other extended-weighted circumstance. But at the end of the day, I've always said it, and I'll say it till I'm blue in the face, taxpayers' money shouldn't have to take, shouldn't have to be used to fund private property owners' expense. And in this case, we did, because we were required to, to, to give everyone else in the City of Taft what they're owed. And we expect that this will be paid in full, as presented here tonight, in relief of the lien. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Councilman Waldrop, any comments, sir?
No, everything's been said. As far as I'm concerned, everything's right.
All right. Councilman Shaver, any comments, sir?
Hope you guys articulated well.
Thank you very much.
To me.
I have a couple of comments. Couple of things that were said in this letter. At some point, my last tenant got in bad terms with city code enforcement, and the building was red-tagged. I will tell you unequivocally that people don't get in bad terms with our code enforcement officer, and then he does not arbitrarily red-tag buildings or anything else. He is simply there to see to it that those codes are held to for the public safety and the public good. I actually take exception to that comment, knowing the way that things work around here. And then he says, "At the time, I thought the red-tag approach was excessive. Well, perhaps you should have communicated with code enforcement, and you would have found out in real time, right away, the facts." The City of Taft has ordinances and policies, and cost recovery is one of them. I was there the night of the fire, and I was there at 5:00 AM the next morning, and that fire had reared back up again. And when I was there drinking coffee, the police, I'm sorry, the fire department came down again, and they had been up all night long. They came down again, and they put out the additional blaze. And then it did not take long, because that's a main street. I mean, young people come up and down there all the time. City staff did a great job ensuring that that would not be an attractive nuisance. It was unsafe. Either of those buildings, on either side of it, there was loose masonry that could have fallen, and somebody in there searching for treasure could have been hurt very badly. So the things that took place had to take place, and they were done in a very timely manner. As far as cost recovery, this is what it is, quite simply. It's a shame this individual did not reach out sooner and decide to come here and see us in person. But the fact of the matter is that, as far as I'm concerned, anyone would believe, I believe the entire council feels the same way. It's not unreasonable, and there will be no concessions made recovering this item. So, at this time, I have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Prozam Cryer?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaver?
Yes.
Mayor Nor.
Yes. Now pass on a 5-0 vote. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Next up, item number four, citizens request public comments. Comments are to be received as stated in the above policy. This is the time and place for the general public to address the city council on matters within its jurisdiction. State law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. Council may receive comment and set the matter for a subsequent meeting. Please limit your comments to five minutes. I have a name here, Mr. Mark King, that wants to speak to the council regarding squatter resolution. If you'll step up and state your name for the record, please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Mark King. And I'm experiencing a serious new, newer issue that is kind of presented to us under the circumstances of squatter invasions, criminal invasions of property, essentially breaking and entering. But there is no, sorry.
There's, interestingly enough, not, no established procedure for that. And so those of us who are owners of property-
Thank you. Those of us who are owners of property or managers of property are doing what we can to figure out what to do. If it pleases the council, may I read the introduction letter as a way of setting the stage for a brief presentation?
Please go ahead, sir. You have four minutes left, but absolutely, continue.
Gotcha. As it reads, "I'm experiencing my first squatter invasion at my property at 616 Lucard, as I will review a resolution that has, I've been developing this last month, that I've been working with this. I've spoken with law enforcement in Taft, and it was determined that the most effective way, actually, the only effective way, is to present a possible conflict resolution to the Taft council for your consideration. If thought to have merit, the council could direct the city attorney, city planner, planning commission for study recommendations on the details of implementing a city code addressing unauthorized criminal invasion, taking of a residential unit within the City of Taft. If this can be accomplished, and I, I couldn't stress this more, and effective, it could serve as a model to the county board of supervisors to be enacted, and thereafter, county by county throughout the state, and perhaps statewide. And with its effectiveness, be a resolution possibility for the entire country, on this matter only. As an aside, nothing that I have to propose has anything to do with legitimate rental agreements between a owner of property and a tenant. That is established law, and doesn't, this doesn't have anything to do, it's the unauthorized, illegal invasion of a property, and what to do about that. There's no contractual relationship with that, which is distinctive from our normal situation, as we all know, of property owners and renters. It is my hope that this could spread across the country, and I will attend this meeting, that's fine. I'm a former two-year, eight-year, two-term, eight-year member of the Carpinteria City Council. I have a great appreciation and understanding of the process that you have before you in entertaining a possible regulation. And I'm actually not a resident of Taft, but I've been a property owner with my wife and business partner since 2004, when we established a connection with Taft. So, in that regard, it's interesting that if someone goes into a Home Depot and sets up a tent in the lumber section, they can be evicted immediately, because there's no restrictions about law enforcement taking action on such an invasion. But it's not the same case with a residential property. Law enforcement can't involve themselves into a dispute from, with a legal tenant that has a rental contract with an owner or an agent. Officer Gomez, who's been doing a fine job supporting me in this, in our discussions and the situation, he said that law enforcement officers are just that, not a good idea enforcement officer, or even a great idea enforcement officer, which I hope we have here, says something to work with. But it has to be a law for them to take any action. So, I apologize to the people in the audience, on your second page, the vacancy registry proposal. I'm sorry, the copiers didn't copy that page, but it's very brief. The whereas, I, I phrase it in the terms of what a council would usually phrase it in, you know, whereas, whereas, therefore, therefore, therefore. So my whereas is of why you would have any jurisdiction on this, or why you should take action. The first one, governments shall protect private property rights as referred to in the Fifth, Tenth, and Fourteenth Amendments of the Constitution. A first cause of action for you to take interest. A second, whereas the Fifth and the Fourteenth Amendments actually quote, "No person shall be deprived of property without due process of law." And this code would actually create the due process of how to address a squatter situation. Whereas, in the normal course of events, a residential property will become vacant for reasons of repair, remodeling, renting, or for sale. That's a basis for what the action I'm proposing. Whereas, a property owner is entitled to have a reasonable expectation during a period of vacancy, such property can receive law enforcement authorities' ability to respond to unlawful criminal entry and possession. And whereas, the Tenth Amendment, this is also a very good one, it ends with, anything that's not authorized specifically to the federal government is left to state and local governments such as yourselves. So that creates a sense of ability to address the situation.
Sir, I'm, I'm sorry, I hate to interrupt you, but you're going to have to wrap it up. I've given you a little extra time, so-
Okay.
Wrap it up for me, please.
All right, thank you. So therefore, my suggestion includes these points that you may consider, if it has merit to, in your mind, to create the following. Create a vacancy registry. In fact, I won't try and read this. The points are going to be useful to your staff if you decide to assign it to staff to review. So I'll give you the, just the narrative of it. My concept is to create a vacancy registry, whether with the police department as holding a file, or the city clerk is holding a file, my suggestions. And in that file, any owner of property or an agent representing an owner, which I've outlined in detail here, because I'm not looking to create a new bureaucracy or new extra, I'm looking to do something simple that just makes sense and you can do. The vacancy register can be entered by a property owner submitting, bringing in documentation of his property tax bill, showing the owner his, copy of his license, showing that you're the person that is the owner shown on the property. So we've established who owns the property, and who, and what, who owns the property, and who has control of the property.
Okay.
And then also, then-
I'm, I'm sorry, sir, but I understand where you're going, and we appreciate you've given us the packets-
Okay.
And we have them available. I've already began perusing it, so-
Anybody want to give me their five minutes? No, I'm sorry.
We appreciate the fact that, and, and we've talked about this already, this is, this is an issue that we'll look forward to perusing that, and, and thank you for the ideas, and thanks for coming for the council.
I will remain available if you would like someone like myself, who's been giving it thought, to be included in discussions about the possibilities of it. I'm actually staying in my property on Polk to protect it from squatters. So thank you very much-
Understood. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming for the council. Next up, item number five, council statements and non-action. Councilman Waldrop, begin with you this evening, sir.
Well, we had a pretty exciting-
Well, we had a pretty exciting last night. The lightning and the thunder, boy, that thunder was something else. Then all of a sudden, it just like poured a bucket over your head, here comes all that rain. I opened the front door and had the lights off and it was kind of neat, it was, it was. And what I'm getting at is, all the, my property around my shop had got a lot of water, a lot of rain and the weeds were almost taller than you could walk through. And I was waiting for the rain to quit. Boy, I went out there and finally got it all fixed up and really looking sharp and had a lot of good comments on it. Here it is raining again. What I'd like to get at is, whether it's my property, your property, city's property, whoever, we got to cut those weeds down, they're getting bad on some places. And I'm sure that we might get a little bit more rain, but you're going to have to force yourself to do it or get somebody to do it for you. That's all I got to say, Mayor, thank you.
All right, well said. Thank you very much, sir. Councilman Rivera?
Sure. So this is graduating season and, you know, schools, staff, students, and parents are extremely busy right now. And interestingly, some are not so busy because, and I'm referring to the students. We were just having a recent meeting, Josh and I, with the D-LAC, and the students who are doing well are the responsible students. And we had some parents come in and they had some comments and, and what I personally noticed is there's, there's a lot of excuses of, of why are students not turning in assignments or they can't, the parents can't see grades or that, listen, Taft High goes out of their way to make everything available for parents to be aware, aware of what is going on at Taft High and for their children. We're just noticing a lot of excuses, okay? And it's coming from, or it originates from the parents, because you can see these kids that are coming in, well, I didn't turn in this because of that, or I didn't know this. It's all transparent, it's all on the computer. And it's, we live in a society where we have all this technology. You can call the school. But we're seeing this in our society as well and wondering why we have a weak society in so many areas is people are just not being responsible. And those children are direct reflection of their parents. Again, not in all cases, I understand that, so please, don't come at me. But I'm saying, and it's a general statement and it's very true, because the majority is when we sit down and talk, what are we talking, we're talking about, hey, the government this, or hey, our society this, and we see a demise here. But again, it all begins with the adults. And that includes me, that includes me as well. And these kids that are graduating, they're our future. So I just want to share a couple of quotes, which I generally enjoy doing, and it's just something for you to think about. Mandela says, "Our children are the rock on which our future will be built, our greatest asset as a nation. They will be the leaders of our country, the creators of our nation's wealth, those who care and protect for our people. The greatest gifts you can give your children are the roots of responsibility and the wings of independence." Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much, sir. And thanks to Joseph Mandela as well.
All right, Councilman Bryant, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Rivera hit the nail on the head. I mean, societally, we've seen this change over the last decade or two. We've gone from the generations of folks who are willing to accept a hand up, you know, somebody to help me get on my feet, find my way back into the good graces of society and into a meaningful and productive, I guess, niche, wherever they might like it. And we've transitioned from that to the society that's got their hand out constantly, prevailing, or pervasively, not everyone, but a growing percentage of those folks are looking for a handout and something that's going to be there forever, someone to do something for me. Well, the brass tacks are folks, it's not going to work that way. And if it does for a very short period of time, it's not going to be that way forever. Government money doesn't exist. People who rely on government money don't produce government money. That's the fact of the matter. At the end of the day, if we don't have people producing, working hard, finding ways to elevate their own stature, the stature of their community, and even give back, those are the people who we have to thank for all the nice things that we have. And as society's gone, we're having fewer and fewer of those people. And those people who do make those things are being attacked because people think they're getting too much. But at the end of the day, that's a discussion for another time. Being that it is graduation season, I did want to say on behalf of the, myself, the council members and all the city of Taft, congratulations, whether it's the graduates from Taft High tomorrow, the folks at the junior high on Thursday, and even call it the Taft College graduates, I think it was about a week, maybe two weeks ago, best of luck and wherever your life takes you from here on out, we're here to support you, we look forward to you coming back and being a heavily involved and invested member of this community. And, you know, you made us proud at this point, but we can't wait to see what you've got happening in the future. And lastly, I want to say congratulations to Mark. I mean, when we started this process of our downtown specific plan, idea-wise, three to four years ago, we were having this discussion. Now granted, some of this discussion was kind of, I don't know, we found some roadblocks with COVID, right? The downtown specific plan has, I think, been started about two years ago. It finished roughly a year ago. And so we're, even now, a year later, we're just getting into the meat of how do we make it work for our community? And that's what, one thing, even in a small community where government does work fast, it's still government and it doesn't work that fast and it's not for lack of trying, right? I just really ask folks to be patient, know that based on the comments the General Lady had tonight about our updating the code and then evidenced by the award that we're getting for the investment and the advancement of our community that we're trying to do, please be patient, but know we have a plan and we're working toward it. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you very much, sir, appreciate that. Mayor Pro Tem Cryer?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Rivera hit on a nail about the happening in our schools and stuff, you know, there's a lot of things parents can use and tools they can use. Taft has the greatest high school. They do a lot. Our college does tremendously in trying to get people to learn their new trades and education. Our high school follows the piggytailers at and they do a hell of a good job on there and there's a lot of resources that parents can use, the students can use, they get the scholarships, and the grade schools, our elementary school, there's so many resources there. And I follow it, you know, I don't have any children in school right now, they're already graduated and families of their own, but I do follow it because our kids are our treasurer of our country. They're our future, they're going to be the ones that are going to be taking care of us and continue our great country's traditions. So it's very, very important with our school system. So thank you, Councilman Rivera, for bringing that stuff up there. And on the other end, school's going to be out, there'll be a lot of new drivers out there, getting new cars, getting their wings wet for driving, so be careful and watch out for the right of ways and stuff. Now, thing two is the Taft Republican Assembly will be having a raffle for a Glock nine millimeter. And it's going to be raffled off at our Fourth of July, or July 1st at the Railroad Trails Fireworks. You know, opportunity to buy a raffle ticker for $5 apiece. And I've been buying them, but I haven't been winning, but it's an opportunity because a way to celebrate Fourth of July, if you win a nice Glock nine millimeter on there. And another, another thing too, is I had a meeting this morning in Bakersfield, I'm on a, I'm on the California, or San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District of Citizens of Idris Reed Committee, I'm on that. And if you read my agenda, it'll make you cry, but I'm just going to go ahead and just read one point of what was on the agenda. It's called the Advanced Clean Fleet Regulation Overview, what California is trying to do to our trucking industry, the oil industry, the farming industry, and also it's going to affect the drivers that drive cars, at different times, different mandates and stuff, that's going to come down, down there and, you know, mandate that we have to do it. If we don't, states will do it and they're going to be very pretty. But I just, it's ridiculous what they're trying to do, but I have a whole presentation they presented, all these great ideas, how they're going to do it, and it's not going to work. Believe me, there's no way they can make this damn thing, excuse me, this thing's going to work right. You know, this cost prohibitive, they're saying that there'll be plenty of energy, not a problem, all this electrical stuff. It's not going to happen. We're having shortages right now of electricity. Everybody on the board, on the Bakerfield, the Southern District, we complain, we don't want it. And then, you know, we have a member, Les Clarks, on the board too, he gave his statement because he protects the oil industry and stuff. They're destroying our energy, our energy, they're destroying our economy, our, in our great state. A lot of people are just leaving. The truck drivers, a lot of them are independent mom and pop truck drivers and stuff, or sub haulers. They'd be so impacted, there's no way they can continue their livelihood. I just want the public to know what's happening, but we let these people in office. Why do we continue doing it? Why don't we make a change, make a statement that we don't want this stuff here? We want, yes, we want clean energy, but it's not the way to go about it. But that's pretty much what I want to say, let people know what is going on and, but it still has to pass through the courts, there's still some hoops they have to follow to make it happen. And, but I still like to have our freedom and freedom of choice. That's all I have to say, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Everybody was watching, I'd have to guess, the negotiation regarding the debt ceiling. Biggest story in the world, actually. But one of the guys on the front of that, it's kind of a local guy, he's been here many times, he's helped us within the city of Taft, I'm talking about the Honorable Speaker Kevin McCarthy. And I spent a great deal of time with the speaker when he was a legislator and he's been over here a bunch. You watch what went on, the give and take, negotiations on both sides of that, and there was a very basic concept that I never saw talked about much. Here's that basic concept. You cannot borrow your way out of debt. Pretty basic, right? One sentence, you cannot borrow your way out of debt. The United States, through their debt, everybody else is betting on the ability of the people that are in the United States in the future to be able to create wealth. That's why they buy our treasuries, all right? $32 trillion worth of debt right now. There's one way to get out of debt. You got to earn your way out of debt. You have got to unleash the possibility that is the American machine, you know? We proved it in World War II and we proved it time and time again. Government has one critical role when it comes to stimulating the economy and creating jobs. All government need to do is create a business-friendly atmosphere conducive to private sector investment and then step off to the side, assume the support role government was meant to assume, and let the private sector, through the miracle of capitalism, create income and opportunity, put people to work. Every time you buy another tanker load of oil from a foreign country or another giant boatload of anything, you ship American dollars overseas. That money is gone, it's not coming back. If you create energy here or you build things here and you support that, the money gets turned over in the local economy seven times. That's what funds programs for the elderly and for the veterans and for schools, whether it's higher education, kindergarten, but the key here is government. Don't create a situation whereby more people count on you because government, like the councilman said, has no money. All government does is collect the people's money and abuse it. And typically, they do a really crappy job. So unleash the beast. Believe in America, invest in America because Americans can and will and want to work and earn. That used to be who we were, the opportunity to go out there and make whatever you want of yourself by earning it, sweat equity. It was not shameful to ask for a hand up, but constantly asking for a handout, that used to be a problem, not anymore. I don't know why we missed that during the whole debt challenge, but I hope that comes to the forefront, I really do. Congratulations to all those that are going to graduate. It also means summer's right around the corner, it means increased traffic on Kern Street, more kids, more scooters, more bicycles. Pay attention. I myself watched multiple groups of adults cross the street, walk right by the little push button that would alert the signs, never push the button, just step blindly out into traffic. It's scary. The turnout lanes, the work that Caltrans did out here on the highway turned out really, really nice. It looks good and I think it's going to be a great benefit, good design. So hats off to those folks, it's just about completed. And that is all I have. Thank you very much. Next up, item number six, planning commission report. We have a planning commissioner just dying to come talk to the council.
Oh, I always like seeing you guys up there. Yes, Jerry Livingston, planning commissioner, here with the report. This is a report on a special meeting. We had to postpone the hearing of a conditional use permit for GPS's Batch Concrete Plant to a subsequent meeting. The meeting was held, approval was given, and any of the issues that were delaying it are being worked out between state-level governmental agencies and the developer with our planning director.
All right, very good. Thank you very much for the, for the report. Item number seven, department reports. Do we have any department reports? We have the chief of police coming up here to speak with us, Chief Damon McMahon.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, councilman. City manager Jones, I darnell, stepping in, great job. City attorney Jason. That would be jaywalking and of course, it's not illegal in the state of California, Mayor.
That's true.
As of January 1st, 2023.
No longer a crime.
It's no longer a crime.
I don't know why we have signs.
And the other word for Josh Bryan and Councilman Rivera be enabling, and that's what we do so much and parents do so much, we deal with it daily. So I don't mean to be negative about it, but it does stick in my craw a little bit at times, too. I'm going to give the statistics for the month of May for our police department. We had total incidents of 895. We had calls for service this year, the little, or that month, and they were a little heavy at 479. We did officer-initiated incidents at 416, traffic stops of 29. We had vehicle pet stops of 59. Total officer reports this month were, or in the month of May, were 149. We had 45 total misdemeanor and felony arrests. We had 30 of the misdemeanor and 15 of the felony arrests. We did do 32 citations, seven infractions, 23 misdemeanors, misdemeanors and two vehicle parking citations. I also wanted to speak today a little bit on, recently, we enacted a $5,000 reward regarding felonies, egregious felonies that are occurring in Taft fires such, and just letting, letting the public know that that's still an option. We would love information on the crimes that are occurring. There are not many, but we would love to have the information and ID individuals and it predicates on a, an arrest and conviction for that money. Also, I also wanted to speak on, which I've done many times, about cameras in the downtown and residential areas. It's a tool to help us and it's also a tool to help the business owners. They're fairly inexpensive, said it many times, and I'm just the parrot today, but I would really like to see individuals place the cameras in front of their store and I've heard the difference excuses of, oh, they'll steal them or they'll break them, but they're fairly inexpensive and they do help us quite a bit. So if you get an individual that's stealing it, usually get a nice facial shot of him when he's doing it or he, she's doing it, and that helps us with prosecution, it really does. And it's, you know, help thy neighbor. You're taking care of not only your property, but you're taking care of others and that's what Taft's all about, it really is. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, chief, thank you troops.
Thank you, I sure will.
Any other department reports this evening? Seeing none, next up, city manager's statement, city manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor, no further statements tonight.
All right, city attorney's statements, Jason?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no statement.
Okay, item number 10, future agenda requests, any this evening, gentlemen?
None here.
None here.
Seeing none, we'll move forward to consent calendar items 11 through 14. All items listed on the consent calendar shall be considered routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council requests specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Any item removed from the consent calendar will be considered after the regular business items. Are there any items on the consent calendar that any member of the public would wish to comment on? Seeing none, those items... Seeing none, those items are, item number 11, the minutes of the May 16th, 2023 regular scheduled meeting. Item number 12, payment of bills, about $147,000 worth. Item number 13, appointment of the city manager as the authorized signer for administering agency-state agreement for federal aid project number 06-5193-F15. Recommendation there is a motion to adopt a resolution entitled Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft Appointing the City Manager as the Authorized Signer for the Administering Agency-State Agreement for Federal Aid Projects, number 06-5193-F15, and finding that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, set forth in Section 15060(c)(3) and Section 15378 of SEQA Guidelines. Item number 14 is an update of Section 103 of the Administrative Policies and Procedures Manual pertaining to appointments to boards, citizen committees, and commissions. Recommendation here is a motion to adopt a resolution entitled, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft Updating Section 103, Appointments to Boards, Citizen Committees, Commissions of the Administrative Policies and Procedures Manual, and find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, set forth in Section 15060(c)(3) and Section 15378 of the SEQA Guidelines. Does any member of the council wish to remove any of these items from the consent calendar?
I'd like to remove 14.
All right, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve items number 11, 12, and 13.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Cryer.
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant.
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop.
Yes.
Councilman Rivera.
Yes.
Mayor Nor.
Yes, now passed on a 5-0 vote, thank you very much. Next up, item number 14, update of Section 103 of the Administrative Policies and Procedures Manual pertaining to appointments to Board Citizen Committees and Commissions. City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. An update to Section 103 is necessary due to the addition of the Oversight Committee for Measure A.
All right, thank you very much, sir. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt a resolution entitled Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft Updating Section 103, Appointments to Board Citizen Committees, Commissions of the Administrative Policies and Procedures Manual.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mayor Pro Tim, you asked that this item be removed from consent calendar, do you have a comment, sir?
I do have a comment, and there's opportunity for the people here in our city to get involved in our local government, get on these boards that we have. We have, you know, the Panning Commission, the mosquito abatement, we have the Westside Healthcare District appointments, you have a panel coming up for, you know, on the tax advisory for how we spend our money. There's so many opportunities to be part of it, because all, a lot of us, you know, will hear complaints with how our government is running. We find fault for everything, but never say much of a positive deal. But here's your opportunity to get involved and do something, and to inspire other people and ourselves, because there's no wrong answer in questioning things, is to come up the right answers on these different boards. And I encourage people, when they need to come up to be on appointments and stuff, come up and fill out, and help be part of the process. And that's all I have to say, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Councilman Bryant, you had the motion on this, do you have any comments on this, sir?
Just one point of clarification, specifically regarding Measure A, I wanna make sure we're super clear that the Oversight Board provides just that, oversight only. At the end of the day, there's no decision-making going on when it comes to this specific Oversight Board. You're just there to verify on the public's behalf that the city is doing exactly like we said we were going to do with those funds, and I intend to see that through. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Gentlemen, any additional comments on this item?
Yes, sir.
All right, seeing none, I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Cryer.
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant.
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Mayor Nor.
Yes, now passed on a 5-0 vote, thank you. All right, that concludes our open session portion of this evening's meeting. This council will go into closed session for two items. Item A, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, Government Code, Section 54956.9B. Item B, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Government Code, Section 54956.9A. Taft Union High School versus the City of Taft. I wanna thank you all for being a part of this evening's meeting. Thank you for the wonderful award and the work, Mark. And everybody, be careful, God bless.